This conference will now be recorded.
And Mr. Wanggold is still not on?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Wednesday, November 17th, 2021, meeting of the Monterey Select Board, here at held at Town Hall and remotely. I am the Chair, Stephen Weiss. I'm President of Town Hall.
Justin Maycock, President.
And Don Wanggold is absent.
I'd like to make a statement.
So, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to open the session, open the regular session. And as the first item on the agenda is a BNRC Conservation Restriction, Mr. Maycock would like to make a statement.
Well, for conflict of interest purposes, I know I refused myself from an earlier item regarding the Bidwell House because there is a potential I may be paid by the Bidwell House. I have not been, I have not been paid by the Bidwell House since I stopped mowing their lawn, not this year, but the year before that, in the fall 2020. And I don't think that this decision has any impact on, or any potential impact on my financial status. So, I think that I am able to participate in this matter because I haven't been paid by them for a year and I don't think it'll have any financial impact. I know, I said at one point I may be paid, but I didn't, I didn't take the payment, so. So, I don't work for the Bidwell House and I don't plan on working for the Bidwell House anymore since I stopped mowing their lawn last year.
Well, I, from the perspective here at the Chair, I don't see any, I don't see any potential conflict of interest if you're not, if you're not being paid by the Bidwell House. And since the last time you were paid was, was way before you ever even ran for office, I don't think, I don't think a conflict, I don't believe a conflict exists. But thank you for bringing it to the attention. And if there's anybody in the public that feels strongly that there is a, that there is a conflict, you can certainly raise your voice now. Okay, there being none, let's, let's jump right into it. We've got Rob Hoogs is, is here, I believe. Rob?
Adam, right? Adam?
Yep.
Adam, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Adam. Adam, you're going to present?
Yes, sir, thank you, I appreciate it. Yes, there are other people that are on the call that are, you know, with the project, but I'll be presenting this evening. And, all right, so, good evening, everyone. Thank you Chairman Weiss and other members of the Select Board for being here. My name is Adam Galambos and I am the Land Conservation Associate with the Berkshire Natural Resources Council in Pittsfield. And just for record, BNRC is the regional nonprofit land trust in Berkshire County with almost 55 years of land conservation experience. I'm appearing before the Board this evening seeking municipal approval for a proposed conservation restriction pursuant to Section 32 of Chapter 184 of Mass. General Law. The grantor is Bidwell House. And the two grantees of this co-held CR is Berkshire Natural Resources Council and Monterey Preservation Land Trust. On land located at the Bidwell House Museum at 100 Art School Road. And the CR will cover approximately 179 acre portion of the 196 acres of land described in Book 694, Page 337, the Berkshire South Registry of Deeds, and also identified as Lot 14 on Tax Map 213. As you all likely appreciate, a CR protects the various conservation values of the land. Beginning on page 2, Section 1.
Stop, 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 stop. Hold on. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Let this please, just please for the public, let the public know that CR means Conservation Restriction. We're trying to get away from using initials that, that people may not understand. So, public should not understand. Don't use the initials, just use the full words.
No problem. So, yeah, this conservation restriction protects the various conservation values of the land. And beginning on page 2, Section 1, you'll see that the Bidwell property has a lot of these conservation values we're trying to protect. As recipients and holders of the CR, we agreed to annually monitor and steward the land to ensure that it's preserved in its natural scenic and open condition in perpetuity. Section 2, which begins at the bottom of page 4, highlights both the prohibited and permitted acts and uses within the CR land. In a nutshell, this section restricts uses in broad strokes and then gives them back, subject to specific criteria, to specifically protect those conservation values. Outside of these two sections, there's not too much to note. It's regarded as business as usual, although the CR has been reviewed, approved by the grantor, the grantees, as well as the legal review team at the Mass. Department of Conservation Services in Boston. So, yeah, thank you Chairman Weiss for letting me have the floor for a few moments to explain the project. I included a, a separate signature page with the submission, should the Board vote to approve a motion to sign. And I'm also available to answer any comments or questions. Thank you.
The, the conservation restrictions, if held, was this previously held by the land trust? I see a few times on here.
Nope, the conservation restriction had not been conveyed out. It was still, there was no conservation restriction drafted. It was, the land will still be owned in fee by Bidwell House. And this is an option that they're choosing to exercise to further protect the property.
Steve, just to add to that, the, so the Bidwell House, and Rob can answer this too, of course. The Bidwell House has been looking to conserve its land for many years now. And to do so by essentially selling the conservation restriction, which is to say the development rights to the land in exchange for a restriction and using that money to help them with their endowment. So, the land trust raised, thanks almost entirely to the Sheffys, $300,000 for the restriction. So, the money is coming from the land trust to the Bidwell House for the restriction. And BNRC and MPLT are co-holding the restriction. So, Bidwell still owns the land, but the development value has been removed from it. Does that help?
Yeah, that helps.
Okay.
So, so I'm going to make a motion, but then we're going to open it up to the, to the, to the public. I'm going to make a motion that we, we accept this proposed conservation restriction as drafted, as drafted here. You second that? Let me just, let me open it up to the public. Anybody have any questions? Anybody, anybody out there? Susan Cooper has a question. I can see her hand.
I just wanted to know if Rob Hoogs had anything to add to what Adam and John have said.
Well, thank you, Susan. This has been a long time coming. We're, it's been a goal of the Bidwell House and certainly something that I've been working for and looking forward to for a long time. And so, we're delighted to, to reach this, this momentous day. And really happy with the conservation restriction being held by both Berkshire Natural Resources Council and the Monterey Preservation Land Trust. And let me just, we cannot thank the Sheffy, Lou and Joyce Sheffy enough for their gift that made this possible. So, thank you Joyce and Lou.
And by the way, Joyce is aware of this. I've been in touch with her and this has been long in her heart to see happen while she's still alive. And she is still alive and well. And as soon as, soon as this gets done, I will tell her that it's, it's done. And she's really, she's really thrilled about this. So, this is a win for everybody. And the Bidwell House, I mean, again, not to speak for Rob, but Bidwell House now has much more of a secure future for all of this.
And that, and that is exactly, that is exactly why I'm, I'm, I'm pleased to, to, to approve this. Bidwell House is certainly, I mean, Bidwell House is a jewel here in Monterey. Anything that protects that jewel is, is okay by, okay by me. So, if there's no other public comment, I vote yes. Yes. Okay. It's accepted. Go, go call Joyce.
Great, thank you all very much. This really has been quite a few years in the making, 14, I believe. And this is really worth everybody celebrating. Thank you again.
You can send this to the brochure.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thanks. All business. So, we're going to try to get to signature spots. Okay, for the, let me, let me sign this, remember the official. Okay. So, anyway, I want to show them all your pen that I signed it with. Let me know. So, we're going to try to get some of their sub, we're going to try to get some minutes approved. And, uh, starting with the oldest, with the oldest one and moving forward, the minutes of, have you had a chance to read the minutes of October 6th, 2021?
Yes.
Okay. The only thing that I added was, there was no mention of that it was actually a vote taken to approve, to have a special town meeting on the 6th of November. The motion passed 3 to 0. So, that's the only thing that I added to that. Is that okay? So, I make a motion to approve the, the minutes of October 6th, 2021?
Second.
Second. I go yes?
Yes.
Yes. So, maybe, all right. All right. So, the next one is the minutes of October 27th, 2021. And the only, I read, so I, I, no problem with your changes, Justin. The only thing that I added was, 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 right, was this, disagreed because, because it didn't come, it seemed to be.
You're just adding disagreed because?
Because initially the reason, yeah, initially disagreed because the reason was to remove them because they had applied, they had access to them. And, um, sorry, so the other one here was, oh, so Steve Moore's, so basically, I wanted to, so Steve Moore did make a very important point that this type of discussion could be corrosive to, to, to the body politic. So, what I did was, I mean, I got rid of this, I mean, you know, I mean, I took out this, this item here, but I just added these words, so this activity can be corrosive to the body politic, which is what he stated.
Yeah.
So, okay, so I make a motion to approve, which both of our changes. Second, minutes of, hold on, 10, 27, 21. Second, I go yes?
Yes.
Okay, so, you want to, so do you want to make a, make a mark as to the, my changes? Okay, terrific. We're moving along. November of the draft, of the minutes of November 3rd, 2021. So, I, so, I changed, I replaced the word bring to align. And, and from appointment to employee. Yeah, okay. I suggested, I know that you took out the one that you actually got a compliment here and you took it out. I say leave it in, but it's, it's entirely up to you. I mean, we so well, so we're, 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 we're compliments, I would leave it in this.
I didn't think it, you know, was, is necessary for the minutes.
Yeah. It's entirely up to you. Do you want to put a line through it, put a line through it? But I, I, I have no problem.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would.
Want to put a line through that?
I would, yeah.
Okay. So, we'll find that copy then. So, I, so I make a motion to approve then as, as you've just changed. Take a second. Second. And then I go yes?
Yes.
Okay. Here. And I'm going to sign this change here. Okay, last one, everybody. This anymore. Is the minutes of, of November 10th, 2021. I read through it. Didn't have any problems with it. Oh, sorry about this. Until the last page, I found that there were some, I suggested, yeah. So, so there was discussion about, about, about the, about the new working group. And what was left out was that, that Peter had asked if the, if he could appoint the members and we told him that it's a public group. So, we suggested an ad hoc and then he decided that he'd rather have a formal group.
Yes, that is in line with my recollection.
Yeah. And then the only other one was just a, a little clarification of what I actually, I said at the town meeting on number 9A.
Yeah, it's a change in wording.
Yeah, change in wording, as to what I actually said. So, that's okay with you, Justin. I make a motion to accept the, the minutes of November 10th, 2021. And I've been changing, oh, I'm sorry, I made one more change. I just got rid of that word act, return, and left it was return to act, but there was not, that act didn't make any sense.
All the changes I agree with.
Okay, good. So, I make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Second. I go yes?
Yes.
Yes. I said, yeah. And so, if you want, oh, and then flip it to the end and sign all of the, pretty candid changes. Okay, so, the reason has some good reading. And we're all, we're all caught up. We should mention that, uh, people don't know, people don't know, Mr. Wanggold is not present. So, that's the reason why we're not addressing him, asking him to sign any of this because he's not here. Okay. So, 1B, public records on website. We're still waiting, I understand, we're still waiting on, on several responses.
I did, the planning board is going to start doing it. And then I haven't heard from the ZBA, we're going to start doing it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the fact that we started by example, rather than creating a policy that, for each individual board, that may look very different is, is good. And maybe at some point, you know, we ask them what we worked for and maybe at some point we send out a formal communication suggesting that they find some way to comply. It sounds like planning board and others have already taken, taken that initiative. But, you know, maybe we could do something more formal to get everyone headed in the same direction.
Well, I think maybe it's a good idea to, to pick a, pick a date. Let's say, you know, ask people, can you comply by December 10th? Or, you know, I mean, so that everybody has something to, you know, that these committees have something to work towards. Obviously, they don't, you know, they don't meet on a regular basis. But instead of just saying, go, can you do it, can you do it, can you do it? Come up with a, come up with a date that we're certain that everybody's going to have the opportunity to meet prior to that date and say, listen, we really need your response by this, this date.
Yeah. I mean, the whole idea is to have public records be more easily accessible, right? And we're starting with, you know, public documents used during meetings. And it's good to see other people are taking initiative without a formal prompting. But yeah, let's talk about setting, something more formal and setting a date.
Okay, what, do you want to, want to set a date?
Well, I think, and this is the difficulty from talking to people on, on different boards. I heard with the ZBA, it's, it's easy to comply because all of their documents are already in digital format. With other boards, it may be more difficult. But we could, what if we write a policy for the town that minutes shall include documents used during meetings? But it would be good to have a, a policy in writing.
Right, but first we're asking for their feedback, I guess. That's the problem with a lot of people, a lot of these committees do not have that much, do not give them their feedback. So, I think the first step is to get everybody's feedback by a date certain and then, and then, and then come up with a policy. So, you want to give them until the, do you think the end of the year is too long? You want to, you want to make it to the middle of the year?
Yeah, some boards may only meet once before the end of the year. So, yeah.
So, when I give it to the end of the year? And then, and, and give a letter with basically say, we really need your input by the end of the year. Following in the, you know, in the, in the new year, the Select Board will be making, will be making a policy. So, this way they understand that, that there's a deadline and that we need their input. You know, it would, it would behoove them to give us their input before we actually take a talk.
And in the, in the interim, it's good to see, and other people, and for people who are on boards and commissions, maybe you can urge them to start posting their documents with the minutes, if they're not already. Okay, all right, end of the year sounds good.
Okay, okay. So, 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 I move that we, that we, that we send out a notice again to all the boards and committees and let them give that to the end of the year. And with, with a written understanding that there's, that the board is, the Select Board is looking to make a policy based on that, and that's done in a formal letter or email.
Yeah.
Second. Okay. Yes?
Yes.
Actually, you know, is there anybody in the public class to make a comment? Or are you just brushed into that? No? Okay. Great, okay. So, uh, the ARPA policy. The ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act. And it's the ARPA Draft Survey. So, as I mentioned in the last meeting, the town of Monterey is receiving approximately $138,000 from the, ultimately from the federal government, but it's, but I think it's washed through the Commonwealth. And trickles down to us. So, as, in line with other towns, we are asking the public, basically, how, how we should use this, how we should use these funds. We're putting together a survey to get the public input on it. Melissa came up with a, a very good initial survey, although we found it a little wordy. And I asked her to take another crack at it.
I do prefer, when people are selecting, they can have some examples of what, it, it, it is a large, there's a lot to read for, for that kind of selection. But at least it's clear. I would be happy to send this out in, in this kind of sheet.
Definitely, definitely much more, definitely much more concise. There are examples, there are examples here on, on page 3 and 4. And then there's a general, then there's a general survey.
The one thing, could we add? There's just, there's a limited number of uses for ARPA funding. So, some things could not be funded. But could we add, would it make sense to add a general comment section at the end? If some, you know, because you only get so much when people select 3, they may think 1. Like, they may think a water project is the most important, but by just checking out that box, that, that we don't get this, their sense of, we only get that they checked that box. And so, maybe that, that's the only thing I would add. And we may get people who are asking it to be used in ways that we can't, but I would like to see if someone, I mean, the, you know, the ambulance reached out about potentially using it for that. And so, if people know that it could be potentially used to help the ambulance service and they, they want to support that, there's no really way for them to tell us in, in here. So, that's the only thing I would add.
So, is this done through Survey Monkey? Is that what this is?
I'm doing it through Google.
Through Google? Because, so a lot of these survey things, they have a text box, but they obviously, they have, it's a limit. It says, you know, make comments, but there's a limit to it. Because if you don't have a limit, then, you know, maybe they write a, maybe they write a book. So, I, I think that's, I think that's a fine idea. It would be, you know, even if, even if there are, even if it's outside the scope of, of, of ARPA, it's always good to know what people, you know, what people would like their money being used for. But I, I would recommend that it be limited, I don't know, whatever they do, like limited to 50 characters. It's a standardized limit.
500, 1,000, whatever you guys like.
For characters or words?
Oh, I thought it was like 50 words. Anybody ever take, anybody know about the?
Characters, 500 characters.
I'm not sure that I can limit it.
I think, if that's, I'm not worried, you know, if someone sends in a long thing about something that doesn't relate to ARPA, it's easy, you know, I don't think.
Okay, sorry. So, I, I, I agree with you. So, if we can see, if we put it in a text box, if we can put it in a text box or, you know, any other suggestions that we may have missed or any other suggestions on how to use American Rescue Plan Act funds, please type it in and hopefully people will keep it clean and on point. But, good job, also.
Go on that.
So, we're going to vote, so I vote, okay, so I vote to accept. Oh, and the only other change I would, I would make, I would, this is very minor, but in the ticker, on the ARPA survey, can you please just use, instead of, because it's three select, instead, there's after the age thing, it says, please select three areas. Could you make it the number 3? Just so that it stands out more and people understand it's three areas because otherwise this looks like a bunch of words. So, with that change and the addition of the, of the, of the text box, then I move that we accept the draft, the draft ARPA survey and, and send that to the public. Take a second?
Second.
Anybody? Any audience want to say anything? No, Don, really? I'm characteristically quiet. Okay, so, um, I vote yes?
Yes. Okay. Create draft policy. Agenda, well, agenda post survey results.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Agenda. So, this is, so the survey, the question that was asked was if people would like to have access to their own webpage and/or post their own meetings if they're a board chair. Great. And you have half of the responses about. Maybe we should do the same thing and set a deadline because we're asking for input and we really want input to know where people are at and what works for them. But if they're not going to send input, I don't want. And we really want input to know where people are at and what works for them, but if they're not gonna send input, I don't wanna delay it indefinitely.
Done, end of the year. Right, does that, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
We're gonna try to, we're gonna try to fix all problems in twenty twenty-one.
And then we'll take whatever responses we get and make a policy based on it.
Gotcha, so then we're gonna have essentially the same email going out, saying that we're, you know, that we're looking for your response here. Um, uh, the board's gonna make a policy at the, in the new year, so you have until the end of the year to, to, uh, to provide us with, with your.
Comments.
Comments. And, and I can, I can turn that into a motion? That's a motion.
Second.
Second. Are they yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, now we're at money grant administration policy. This is.
It's not in there, cause I would suggest that you table it to allow the accountant a chance to look at the edits that Justin made.
Okay, have I seen the edits that Justin has made?
Uh, no, but the, since the policy was originally written by the accountant, cause they're the ones that, this is, you know, a policy from their department. I wanted her to be able to see them before you guys.
I would make a motion to, and then table it to the next, to the next session. Second, I, I'd like to mostly get a copy of the edits that Justin made.
Yeah.
Prior to that.
Yes.
Thank you. Seconded, I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Correction to office hours.
Yeah, so last week, and when it was suggested to work a half a day on Friday, I didn't realize that the proposal that I had was set for the hours of my contract, and that added more hours than I was originally proposing. So the correction would be for the hours to be Monday, eight, eight to three thirty, Tuesday, eight thirty to four, Wednesday, eight thirty to five thirty, Thursday, nine to four thirty, and Friday, eight thirty to twelve.
I'll motion to approve the office hour. I'll second that. I vote yes.
Yes.
All right, and uh, I'm confident you're gonna work, end up working longer hours than.
Oh, I know, but those are just posted hours.
Access to, to, okay, access to council, draft, um, so I see that, um, so, uh, so we have, so the, uh, for the public certification, uh, town council asks us to perfect the, um. An agreement on, on how we should use town council, because there were getting lots of requests from everywhere. We wrote the, they were proposed, uh, policy for access to council, um, several learned individuals made, made comments. Um, and um, uh, at the, at the end of the last meeting, it did not get approved. Uh, Justin wanted to take a chan, uh, take a, uh, swipe at, at, um, making some changes here, um, they're substantial.
Um, so I can explain again to start. So, uh, I think I made about three major changes. The first is that we got a response of, uh, what happens if the chair, you know, choose, because usually requests to access council come before the whole select board. Um, but if a request is confidential or emergency, it goes to the chair, and what happens if the chair doesn't approve it? Someone, uh, one comment on the policy was, what happens if the chair doesn't, does the request just die? And I added in, or what if the chair can't involve himself? And so I just added in, if the chair of the select board must refuse himself on a matter due to conflict of interest, the alternate chair shall act as liaison to town council for that matter. And then another comment was if, um, what if the chair doesn't follow through on this policy? What do we do? And so I added, if the chair fails to fulfill the responsibilities laid out in this policy, or if the chair does not authorize a confidential or emergency request for access to town council. Their request for access to town council should have the ability to make an appeal to the entire select board about the matter. But I think, you know, as long as things run smoothly, that doesn't happen, but it, I guess it's kind of a fail safe, depending on who the chair of the select board is.
You're memorializing events that would happen, whether the policy is written or not, quite frankly, uh, which is, not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm just saying that it is generally what's been going on here. If for some reason the chair says, I'm not gonna do it, people, you know, people have the right to make the appeal to the board. What, um, why don't we do this?
Then my other, my other two major changes was, I just separated out the paragraph. It, the way Brian Riley had written it, he combined, uh, issues of a confidential nature with issues of a, an emergency nature. And I just felt that it would be easier to have them in two separate items, because they're, they're different. So that way, if, if you're a department head, or you're a board chair, and you have an emergency item, you, you can look, uh, uh, you know, you reach, it's the same, similar process of reaching out to the chair. But I just separated those two out for clarity, but kept the process the same. And the only other change I would make now, is I would change emergency to time sensitive. Um, because I've spoken to a number of people involved, who feel that they often have a, a time sensitive request of council, whether it's the building inspector who has a code, uh, thing, or the moderator before a town meeting. Um, that may not necessarily be requested, uh, consists of an emergency, but is a time sensitive matter that, that shouldn't wait for the whole board, uh, to decide it.
Yeah.
So I would change emergency to time sensitive.
So, so that's an interesting thing, because remember when, when people want something to happen, you know, lots of times they consider it time, time sensitive. I mean, I, I wanna have, I want this happening by the end of the month. It, it is not really an emergency, but to them, it still may be time sensitive.
Well, it'd be up to the discretion of the chair of the select board.
Is that, does that say that?
Well, yeah, because for, um, this would only be for emergency, uh, or sorry, not emergency. For times when a department, someone wanted to make a request to town council, and they bring that to the chair of the board. And so they don't just go out on their own, they bring that to the chair of the board and say, I have a, you know, I'm the moderator and town meeting is in five days. And I wanna discuss the warrant and discuss any possible things that might happen at town meeting. And that's not, uh, you know, maybe an emergency, but it's, and, but you wouldn't go right to the lawyer, right to council, you would go to the chair and say, I have a time sensitive, uh, request to access council. Um, or Don, you know, Don Tirico might say, I have a, a code that I need to run by the lawyer, and, and he'd re, he wouldn't reach out right to council, yeah, he would reach out to the chair.
Right, so here's, I've got two recommendations. First recommendation is, I like to see this in, in regular format, cause I'm, I'm a little confused with red, blue, green, okay? Um, the second, the second thing is, um, uh, what, at the same time that we've got, each got a, a revised copy of this, you send a revised copy on to town council and let them make their comments on it.
Yeah.
Again, this because, because we're having this discussion based on their requests and basically their, their statement that if you don't have a concise of, of plan, um, they're gonna move on. So.
Yeah.
Um, so my motion would be, um, to, to continue this discussion to the, to the next, the next board set, board session. But in the interim, produce some, um, uh, uh, clean revised copies for both the, the select board members and town, and send it to town council for comment.
I would be, I mean, I'm not opposed, because I, I would wanna check it with them, but I didn't, I mean, other than the, what would happen if the chair doesn't follow this policy? The other, the only other thing I really did separate out, that.
I understand that, but, but again, I, I think, I think in deference to, in deference to their, to their needs, um, you seem to be pretty specific. Um, uh, you, I'd, I'd like to see what their, what their take, take is on it. And I'm not discounting anything that you had mentioned here, okay? Um, but, um, but I, I wanna get their, we wanna get their feedback as well. Yeah, let's send it to, okay, so, so you're accepting my, my, my motion, which is, we're going to, then you went on to the next, the next session over. And then, in the interim, we're gonna provide a, uh, we're gonna provide clean copies to each select board member and town council, or their specific, um, uh. Uh, recommendations, if any.
Second.
Yes, yes, oh, I'm sorry.
John.
Uh, yes, um, you mentioned that there, you received some comments, did you incorporate any of the comments into the policy?
I incorporated yours into there.
Yeah, and I, my, my.
So your, your emergency was, was in response to mine suggested here.
My, my.
The language changed, the language changed, I think I used the word emergency.
Well, council used the word emergency as well, and we may have initially introduced that language. Um, emergency as we found with the open meeting law. I mean, I, I, I just don't know that there's a right, a right word, because for example.
No, no, I, I'm, no, I'm fine with the word, I just wanted to make sure that the submissions, the people that submitted have gotten incorporated.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's gonna be, uh, you know, that's still great, I mean, emergency, time sensitive, those are still kind of nebulous terms.
But it, um, it's the chair's discretion, right? And, and the chair as the liaison to town council will learn over time, uh, if, you know, what? What constitutes a, a good reason, like for example, like with building inspector, and the reason why I prefer time sensitive over emergency is, you know, for things like that, I don't. Is that emergency, it's, it's certainly time sensitive.
I get it, I get it, I get it, but you'll find, you'll find, in the select board, there are people's, uh, some types of people's expectations, um, and rightly so. Um, of, of what they'd like to get done by a certain amount of time, um, might not be in line with what you can do. So if some, so I mean, some people say, I, I, listen, I need to get this done next week, and then when you do a little bit more of an understanding, you realize, it's not, doesn't, I mean, if, if it doesn't get next, if it gets done the week after, it's fine also. Uh, but, but that's, it's a judgment call, um, so, um, uh, so, all right, so we're gonna send this, so, uh, anybody else have a comment? Yes, Mickey?
Yeah, I'll just say that a lot of times people use the word emergency, but it's not emergency. I, I've had people do that today, and I, I'll say, is that someone bleeding? That's an emergency, what you're asking me is not.
So, um, yeah, but that, again, that's, that's, that's part of the judgment call, so, so we'll, we'll send this on to council and we'll find out what it is, so I'm gonna vote yes. Yes, a motion, and we vote yes. Okay, oh, I'm sorry, uh, appointment to challenge charter committee. So it's my understanding, um, that the board, I mean, I, I don't know, do you receive the same email that I received, that, uh, this woman, um, asked not to, that doesn't wanna participate anymore? So we've got three individuals here, um, that are.
We got five.
Well, oh, I'm sorry, time. So right now, appointments made, so right now, there are five people that wanna be on, or five additional people that wanna be on the town charter committee, Donald Coburn, Towne Maximum, Hill, Hill Maximum, Debbie Slater, and Sean Tryon. And that's in addition to, um, the current people that are on it, which is, uh, Mr. Silbert.
Give me one second.
John Silbert, Mickey Jarvis, Catherine Hirsch.
And Ron Winters.
Um, sounds like it's gonna be an active, an active, uh, discussion now, you know, this is, this is very good. This is, um, this is a very good, uh, lesson, that if we're gonna, if we're gonna put these committees together, that, um, that there be a, a number, um, that's affixed at the time that they're, that they're voted in.
Well, so I think what you're identifying is that too large of a committee can have its drawbacks. Having more people on a committee can, you know, allow more perspectives, but if you have too many people, it can be, come unwieldy to schedule meetings, to get consensuses, to have real deliberation. And when we were talking about moving the select board from three members to five members, we certainly, you know, found a lot of drawbacks with moving to five members. Although we didn't really have that discussion at town meeting, we had it amongst the select board. I think, uh, we should have, and we have been with other committees, uh, coming up with a number of seats before we ad, before we advertise. I mistakenly thought, because it had been on the town meeting warrant as a five-member committee, that, that was still, that wording was still in there. I didn't realize that amongst all the amendments, the number of seats was completely taken out. But I don't think that means we should, uh, abandon finding a good size for the committee, which I think is probably five people. It should also be noted that we posted the openings for the town charter committee for, I think, three weeks. And the four people that we appointed, you know, responded within that reasonable timeframe before the select board meeting. And so all of these additional people have responded since that timeframe, so we didn't set a number of seats, but we did set a deadline.
We did set a deadline.
We.
You ask people to respond by a certain date, but. It was back in November twenty-third or nineteenth or something like that, or, I'm sorry, October, um.
October, yeah, it was October twenty-second. And so I think we, one consistent fair way to deal with this, uh, would be to say, you know, thank you for your interest. And we, you know, would, you know, we have other openings on the bylaw review committee, solar energy committee. But, you know, we can't, if we set a precedent, like if we appoint five people and then we continue to get people who wanna be on the committee after the deadline, and we're now creating an, an enormously large committee. I don't know how we deal with that. The other proposal I have is we cap the committee at five people and review letters of interest, uh, people who are interested in being on it. But I'm not, I don't wanna be in the business of creating unreasonably large committees because the select board didn't, you know, failed to say ahead of time how many people we were going to appoint. And what we did say is the deadline of when we wanted interest, uh, and while I'm happy that people are interested in serving on committees and getting involved, there's plenty of other ways to do that without creating an unwieldy town charter committee.
On here? So the, 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 the challenge is, is that the board did not do that. So we can't retroactively say, oh, by the way, now we're gonna change it to five, to, to five people, it's, I mean, it, um, that is, that's really not, um, not proper, it's not democratic. We, um, we did not set a parameter for this particular meeting, for this particular committee. Maybe because we thought, we thought there were, could be a lot of people that wanted to be interested in it, but there were, who wanted to be on it, but it seems that there are.
Well, for me, it was a mistake, okay, cause I thought it was five.
All right, but for, um, for, for me, um, there was a, there was an understanding that there was not, there was not a, there was not a cap on it. And we're never gonna make that, we're not gonna make that mistake again, however, I can't, I can't, we can't go back into time. And also the, the, the thing is this, you have got people that generally wanna be, you know, we have, the problem in town is, is generally people don't wanna be involved, now you have people that wanna be involved. So in this particular case, um, I think that, um, that these appointments should be made, and that, that when this group convenes, that this group, um, will be tasked with the idea of trying to flesh out how they're going to, uh, how they're going to proceed. There are, there is precedent for, for, for committees that are this large, um, in town, um, and, um, so it's not like it's unusually large, larger, large one. However, um, you can't, and you can't, we're not gonna be able to pick somebody and say, hey, listen, you're not, sorry, you can't do it. It just, it's just, it's not right, because all these people wanna be on it. Perhaps after the first meeting, they may, they may change their minds. Um, so we just, I mean, we just, we just can't, um, you know, um, and I understand, I understand what you're pointing, Justin.
So what happens when we get to the bylaw review committee and we have more applicants than seats?
Well, so bylaw review committee.
It's capped at five.
Is capped at five, okay.
And I understand we didn't set a cap, I would argue mistakenly, because I thought that five was on the warrant and I didn't realize.
We can't do anything about it.
What we, what we did do is we said, and this is on the website with the posting, please send letters of interest by October twenty-second. Um, and we set a timeframe, and I think we should follow that timeframe, and I'm.
I did not receive, I did not receive one.
So that was, but the appointment that you had on last week, before this became an issue, didn't apply by October twenty-second either, and you were ready to appoint her.
Well, I put it on the agenda because we received it. Um, and I, and I thought, again, I thought that the limit was five.
Okay.
And we didn't set a limit, but that doesn't mean we need to create a, a. And we didn't set a limit, but that doesn't mean we need to create a, an unwieldy committee. And I cannot, but I cannot, I cannot, we, we cannot, as a board, exclude people that wanna be on a committee just because we, as a board, um, or the, the, that a cap was removed by the town people. We just can't do it. I mean, I mean, I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from here. Um, and again, this committee, this, this town charter committee will, will have to work it out, and if some people find that it's, it's unwieldy, then they will, they will, they will leave on, on their own accord, but we cannot, we have no position to actually pluck out certain individuals and say, you know, I'm sorry, even though we meant that there should be a cap, that we're gonna, I'm gonna remove Nikki.
Hi Nikki.
Um, I just have a question, uh, because I am one of the people that went on at the beginning. Why, and maybe some people couldn't answer this. It just seems strange to me that this whole group of five people who came on, some of them are very political, and I don't think this is a political, committee, this is really something where it has to be investigated and carefully thought out, because we're looking at the future of this town's government. It's not, it's not political at all. Uh, I wonder why these people asked me on after the town meeting? I think that was just, it was just a, a, a thought that came to me, and I looked at it, I go, look, he's got five people that wanna be on this, as far as I know, you know, quite a few of them are very politically motivated. Why was it after town meeting, which was several weeks after the deadline, that they decided they wanna join this committee?
So, you, so, it's an interesting question, but you're, 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 it's, it's, it's un, it's not answerable, because who knows what, why people do what they do, um, and everybody may have different motivations. Well, we could, we're not in that, but we're not in that, we're not in this, that business. We're in the business of, um, the town, the, the town people remove the cap, and, uh, and, and every, and the certain amount of people that want to, that wanna be on it, I, I, I understand.
There had been a deadline.
There.
And then several weeks went by, and in that time, just a few days before, the, the town meeting was on, on November 6th, and this came up on, on November 10th meeting. I just found that very.
I, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
We don't have an answer for you. I will say, one way we could have an answer as to why people buy is looking at their letters of interest, which on the posting online says, please send letters of interest by October 22nd.
But the thing is this, you received, what, three letters of interest? Uh, I mean, you didn't receive five letters of interest.
Right, initially I only received three, because I don't think I got one from Nikki.
I didn't send a letter of interest, I just said that I would've wanted to.
And that's basically what the other people said too, if they'd like to be on it.
So like, you know, so there's, there's always gonna be, if you, there's always gonna be somebody on there that is, that did not, you know, that didn't follow that, that either, so, um, so, uh, this is, he, this is, I mean, there's, there's, unfortunately, there's, there's, there's not, there's not an option here. You cannot, you cannot, uh, specifically, you cannot specifically exclude, um, uh, one member of the public over another member of the public. You just can't. I mean, regardless of. Yes, Tom?
Gentlemen, this issue does not warrant the kind of extended discussions that is going on to have the government run. Pick a number. I don't know how many people are on it now. Are there five on it now?
Four.
There are four, so by Justin's thinking, you have to add one. If you want more, pick a number, see if he'll agree, but vote on it and move on.
What is the total number now that we have?
It'll be nine.
It'll be nine?
Nine, yeah, and we have four, right. And we, we had, we had nine people on, on, uh, we have nine, we've had nine people on, on committees before.
Whatever, make a motion, and, and let's move on.
I make a motion to, to accept these, to, to accept these individuals, um, and the other ones, um, and to complete the town charter committee.
To complete it? Should we keep accepting?
No, I'm saying.
So I'm, I'm not gonna second your motion on the basis that, you know, just because we forgot to set a limit doesn't mean it's gonna be limitless. We wanna create a good committee.
Not gonna be a limit, that, that we're, we're, we're setting, all right, we're setting them, we're setting the limit as to the people, as to the four individuals that are, that are current, that are currently on the committee, and the five individuals that would like to be on the committee. Equally nine, e- equally nine people, and then no more, and no more individuals shall be on that, shall be on that committee.
This list is longer than that, so.
How, how are you gonna say, you know, we're ending now, Steve? If you can't, if we can't deny anyone, how are you gonna say we're ending now?
I'm officially closing the, officially closing the appointment process.
Yeah, that ended October 22nd.
No, it didn't.
No, it didn't.
No, it didn't, it said, please, please does not mean it's a deadline.
If you go by that, there'll be three people on the committee. Come on.
I'm gonna motion for there to be, to set a cap at five people, and we can review letters of interest that are received next week to determine who the fifth person is. That's my motion.
You know what? I'm gonna, I'll meet you halfway. I'll, I'll, I'm gonna modify that motion, that we are going to set a cap of seven people, um, and, uh, and give everybody a chance to, to, to put in their, to put in their letters of interest.
I'm not, I'm not gonna second that, because I think.
Okay, then we're gonna.
I, 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 I'm assuming it was five people.
Yeah, all right, okay, fine, moving on. Note, there's no committee.
At least appoint your fifth person. You've got a list of people.
Except we don't have letters of interest. How can we know who to appoint?
But you didn't have letters of interest the first time.
I know, but I'm saying, now that you're making decisions between people.
But if you're gonna be consistent, right?
I cannot make decisions between people who are, each one is, each people, each person here has an equal, has an equal right to be on the committee. So if, if, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna, if you wanna make a difference between, between five and nine, I'm, I'm willing to say that, that, that seven, that seven is, is reasonable, that everybody reapply at seven. Did we establish it at seven?
Let everybody reapply.
Then everybody would.
If people have already been appointed and sworn in, because they followed the deadline?
Yes, they're three.
There was no deadline. It was please, reply by is not a deadline. Look at the dictionary.
All right, so, so that's, so that's, I'm just trying to come up to a, to a middle ground over here and let everybody get one more shot at.
No.
I'll, I'll, uh, second your motion to cap the committee at seven people and receive letters of interest. I'd like to see letters of interest for the additional three people who are going to appoint, to know, you know, if, if it's gonna be competitive, you know, it's one thing if we're looking around for people, it's another thing if all of a sudden the application process becomes competitive. We need something to base who we're appointing on.
Right, so listen, so i- if people have already sent in their letter, they don't wanna send another letter in, they, they don't have to. If, we'll use that letter. If they wanna send in the revised letter, they have the opportunity to send in a revised letter. But we are going to take, we're gonna take, we're gonna, we're gonna, this committee, we are going to, we're gonna cap this committee at, 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 at seven. We're gonna take all letters until, uh, you wanna do it to the end of the year also?
Well, the other thing is, that we're not, that we're avoiding is that we already have a town charter committee appointed, who's probably gonna be getting to work soon. Right?
No, we have to, we have to, you have to fill out the committee, so.
Well, there's no reason for people as in the committee.
No, because if you, if you make the committee seven people, we'll give everybody until the, until the, uh.
And then, and then the town charter, we, it took all the way from our town meeting, oh, in the summer, until now, we put together a town charter committee, which we did, and they can function as is. We have a point, I mean, we opened an application process for three weeks, we accepted applicants. I went out and re-reached out to the people who said they were interested to make sure they'd be on it, and we appointed them, and they're set to get to work. And so I'm not gonna say, sorry, you followed the process, we appoint you as town charter committee, and now don't do what we ask you to do. So.
I'm, so, so I'm, so I'm making the motion that we, that we, that we, we cap it, and we cap, cap it at seven people, and we give them until the end of the month, until the end, until the end of, of November, to present, uh, to, uh, their letters of, their letters of interest, if they have, if they have already. Um, and then we, um, and then we, we choose seven, we choose seven people.
And you, what happens to the people that have already been appointed and sworn in?
Have they been sworn in?
Some of them have been sworn in.
That's the clerk.
Have they been sworn in?
I have, uh, two bits been sworn in.
And so, you know, we, you know, like you said, we didn't set a limit on number of people, but we did set a day, so that we could do business, so that.
Okay, so that.
And I, we spent additional time reaching out.
All right, so that's, so that's, that's my, that's my, that's my motion. We cap it at seven people, we have people send in their, 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 their interest.
To find an additional three people. I'm not gonna take people who are appointed and sworn in and say, you're not on the committee anymore. It's ridiculous.
Okay, right, so we will, we will, we will give the exception to, who are the two people that were sworn in?
Um, Mr. Winters and, uh, Nikki.
Okay, so with the exception of, of, of Ron Winters.
Were appointed by the deadline.
There was no deadline. Get off of it.
So.
Stop bullying Justin, hello.
Don't tell me what to do.
Ah, I'm not afraid of you.
What's that? Come on, stop it.
I'm not afraid of you. Stop bullying Justin. Those four people cooperated and listened. Keep going, keep going, Justin.
Okay, so.
Good, good, good.
Okay, so we will take the four people that, that, that currently are on the committee, okay? Provided that they actually do, um, or they actually are sworn in by, um, the first of the month. Okay, um, and then, uh, then we will, we'll open it up to s- to three additional people, of the people that are, uh, do the applications, they should send in the, they should send in the letter to the select board, by the end of, by the end of November, by December 1st, except, um, and of those, of those, of these people that are, that are mentioned here, we will pick three of them, and, um, and other people can be on the committee, but this, these are part of the voting numbers. So, um, we will pick, we will pick three people, and then it'll have, it'll have a, I think, of seven people. Is that, you got, you got a second?
Second.
Yes, yes, yes.
Can we make the other two alternates?
Yes, you can have alternates, yeah.
You can have seven members and two alternates, and that'll take care of your nine people.
Yeah, absolutely, if you wanna come in as alternate, that's perfectly fine, you did that in Lake, Lake Marfield working room. A lot of people came in, that they were interested in, in it, or, or sometimes they didn't wanna vote, they just wanted to kind of sit in. People can sit in, they're open to, to public media.
I'm sorry to keep everyone waiting, but can I at least have a restroom break inside?
Absolutely, absolutely, we're gonna take five minutes for, for restroom and.
Valley and drink.
Yep, in a, in a folder.
Don't wish for anything while you're. My wife signed over it.
Because the camera's not on you yet.
Why not? Say something.
There you go, now you can wait.
Uh, I quit. Can you hear me? I don't quit, but do you, can you hear me?
She's waiting to you now.
Melissa, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I had my hand up for a long time, and I didn't get called on, and I just wanted to know if there's any chance to discuss at some point the size of committees, because I totally disagree with the idea that five, anything more than five is unwieldy. Anyone who's been on a committee knows that it can be quite large, and if it's handled properly, it's very effective. Uh, I know, uh, John Silbert and Don serve on a very large committee that has, it's a regional school, planning and discussing, you know, what's gonna happen with the regional schools. There are many, many screens up on there, and it's beautifully handled and it works. So I don't know how anybody can put, I don't even think Justin is in the room right now, but this was really what I wanted Justin to hear, and I wanna, I wanna be able to say it, so, so it can go on record, that I think that it's quite un, um, incorrect to call a committee of more than five unwieldy.
Okay, but we, listen, uh, that, that's, but that's the reason why, that if you're at a town meeting and somebody is proposing a, a, a committee, or a, or, um, and, and no one says, no one gives it a, a cap, that a, a cap should be mentioned, just to take a cap away from a committee, you never know what you're gonna get. Sometimes you get three people.
Oh, I'm not saying no cap. I'm not saying no cap, I'm just saying five, a cap of five is way too small, in my opinion.
Although, it's lots of time. Well, he's, he's not here.
I know, I just, you get roll one.
Two people can be absent, and then you have three people discussing important issues.
I can let this board. Sorry? I was told you could listen. So.
So the next.
What? Uh, yeah, so. Why are you not wearing short pants?
I am, they're under me.
Sorry. That's okay. These are. Okay, so, um, uh, old edition number four. Nancy Tomasovich has a public records question. I have the public records question, um, in front of me. We know that she's here, and the question essentially is, as an active volunteer in the conservation commission, why are the documents not being provided to me? Because there's no client privilege related to these documents, and, but these documents, um, are the, seem to be mentioned in, mentioned here, are the complaints. So the, there's an easy answer to that, um, the answer is that if they're complaint, if they're complaint documents, then they're an ongoing, in that, part of an ongoing investigation, and they're not, they're not publicly disseminated. That's the answer.
Then how come Don Coburn was given all the complaints? Is he part of the investigation?
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if Mr. Coburn has been giving the complaints or not.
Yes, he said he was. He announced it at the public town meeting, he announced it on another meeting on November 4th, and he also announced it on the Google group.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't understand the argument, that he got it, you know, I mean, if he.
Well, so then, if he has them, how are they private HR documents when they've been released to him?
None of these documents should have been released to anybody.
That's not the question here. The question is, they're released to them, so they are privileged, as you say, it's no longer there, they're now a public document. And he even said, stop them from Melissa.
So, so I, um, so in my, in my discussions with, with council, um, it's my understanding that that's not the case. You just can't, if somebody gets a hold of something, you can't say, well, they got a hold of it, so therefore I gotta give it to everybody.
Okay, so I'll take a written opinion from the town council, not what you have heard from your town council.
All right, well, once we draft a, a, a council policy, I'll be more than happy to, to, uh, to look at that with the understanding of the, of the current policy.
Town council is perfectly able to give a written opinion. It's been done in the past with Mr. Pollard.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, uh, who else has their hand up there? Susan, hi Susan.
Hi, um, ethically, Nancy, I, I don't blame you for wanting town council opinion, but, um, what I understood Don to say in the town meeting was that he had received those documents from. was that he had received those documents from a member of the press. That notwithstanding.
Um, that is not.
That no, I, you talked several times.
Okay, so then I respond when you're done.
That's fine. No matter where he got those documents, I would argue that he should never have had access to them. They are still privileged documents and it would be unethical for the town, who, as I know, the town did not, as a body, the select did not choose to release those documents. They were released, if they were released, they were released illegally. The last thing that they would be to now make those documents public. That would be unethical, even if it weren't.
Okay, Susan, so Don Coburn, in writing in the Google group, said he received the documents from Melissa, but he did not get the sexual harassment. That is what he said in writing. And according to the town council, Melissa released those, so now she has lost her rights for privacy on those. And Don had that and he stated it three different media and three different times. They are no longer confidential.
So, let me just, alright, let me just thanks everybody for their input.
Not me, you did.
What? Oh, you wanna?
Yes.
Oh, alright.
Let's be perfectly clear. As you all know, I am supportive of Melissa with respect to the complaints that have been filed against her. She has an absolute right to show those complaints to anybody she wants to and certainly to me, who's trying to be of help to her. There is nothing in the least bit unethical. She has a right to show them to her lawyer and she has a right to show them to me for what advice I can give. And the suggestion of unethical behavior is absolutely absurd.
I'm gonna call you back on this on a meeting now. I'll call you soon to that.
Okay, is there, is there any other comments or we're gonna move on? We're moving on. So for B, we received notification that Lisa Smiles resigned from the library board trustees. Okay, so, new business, number one, town administrator Allen's.
Yes, Kyle Pierce, myself and Eileen Marcus interviewed candidates for the outreach coordinator position and we'd like to ask you to appoint.
Emily Hassel?
Yes, thank you. Emily Hassel, a one-year appointment as the outreach coordinator.
I value the opinion of all interviewees, so therefore I make a motion to appoint Emily Hassel for one-year appointment as the outreach coordinator.
Second.
Okay, I vote yes.
Yes.
Welcome Emily. Bylaw review committee update.
So I put this on the agenda and I think we've already fleshed out how to deal with committees and already receive more applicants than open seats. But I guess for anyone out there who's showing interest in the bylaw review committee, if you haven't sent the letter of interest, it might be helpful if it is a case where, you know, we have more applicants than seats and, you know, we'll, I mean, I can't speak for the board, but I would prioritize people who have written a letter of interest and we can compare them if it comes down. Because the bylaw review committee is capped at five people as per the bylaw that it's in. So that's why I had it on there, but.
So, and is it my understanding that people have to run for this position?
After the first year, yes. But right now, like we're appointing a committee for one year and then from then on, it will be an elected position.
So how would that work if you're planning for a year? Because it would bring you to.
I know, I saw that in the, I saw that in the approved town meeting and that's probably a good question for the lawyer, right?
Before we have a discussion about this, I would like to get some clarification from council as to how that, how the mechanics of that work. Because, right, is it from now until May?
Yeah.
And then there's a May election? Because that's gonna make a big difference and then, so. So I may push to table discussion and to reach out to town council to get clarification on that, on that specific issue.
Okay, so you'll reach out to your council? Okay, yeah, if you can reach out to council and say, the bylaw, I believe the bylaw says a year appointment and then from then on it's elected. So would that be this May? I can't imagine that it would make sense to hold a special election every year for bylaw review. So is it this year, May? Or would it be a year and a half?
He's also gonna ask for probably the minutes of the issue, the minutes of the discussion that ensued from the public.
That sounds like.
It is, okay. So if he could, so alright, so that's, so that would be my motion to, that we're gonna table this issue until we get an answer from council on what specifically this, yeah, how this can be populated within what was voted on.
Yeah, and for when the appointment will be until, that would be really good to know. And I believe we do have a date, a suggested date of Friday. For anyone out there in the audience, November 19th would be good to hear from you by if you'd like to be on the bylaw review committee. It's on, it's on the website if you want more information.
Did we receive any, any letters?
Yes. And you should also clarify, are you sending it or am I sending it to council?
Can Melissa send it to council or are you likely to do it?
Yeah, if you would send. And if you've got something written since it's gonna.
Yeah, so I'll also clarify whether they should be registered voters since the position is elected after the year.
I would, I would think they really should be because they couldn't run again. But it's, might as well throw it in there.
Yes.
And then for how long is the appointment? But it's gotta be five, that's in.
Okay, no, that's in there, that's in there. And that, that's fine.
Um.
Definitely fine.
Alright, so yeah, let's, it's gonna be a month because otherwise we would have, let's go.
So that's my motion. Second, okay? We're gonna wait until town, well, the motion won't just say again. We're gonna, we're gonna reach out to town council. We're allowed to do that as long as we get an answer in writing from town council as to how to populate, how to populate the bylaw review committee and the classification of the individuals registered and do they serve for one year from a certain date? Or do they, or what happens at the annual council?
A second.
Okay, yes?
Yes. One other thing I wanna add is it's staggered terms of three years, so it's gonna be two, two, one, or one, two, two, or whatever, right? For how many people are elected. But in that first election, it's worth asking council. Should, I guess it should be, you know, like one person for three years, two for two years and two for one year.
What the recommendation would be as far as the staggering term?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're.
Well, you better also ask them whether you have a right at this point to have a staggering when you didn't include that in the bylaw that was adopted.
Well, we won't stagger the appointments. The first appointment.
No, I'm talking about the election.
It's, no, in the bylaw, it says at the end of that year that positions would be elected, positions with staggered terms of three years.
Is this the same?
Yes. Because that came up at town meeting.
So that's, so that's an additional motion and I second that motion. I vote yes. Okay, I vote yes. Alright, so the next one, so next, okay, so the next one, publicly viewable profane language on private property. So, I see, so this is not the first time here in Monterey where people have chosen to express their feelings by putting a sign on their property. And this particular sign was found to be, was considered to some individuals as profane. The first, first, the first thing is that the plan, I mean, is obviously determination of the sign itself is, meets the requirements. But, but the other thing is this, so it's my understanding that the, that it's a First Amendment right for people to put these signs out whether you like it or not. What we generally do here in town is if people find it particularly objectionable, is that we do have chief or the sergeant make an inquiry. And in cases where there's been, where people have been complaining, they can politely ask them if they would consider to remove that signage. However, beyond that, it's my understanding that the First Amendment protects that signage. So, so that's what has happened in this case.
Well, I would say, because the lawyer could say town officials could ask the individual, right? And it might not be received at all, but.
You can ask.
I would be willing to either myself ask or to talk to the police and see if they want to ask because it's come up as a public concern. And I could go and ask and as long as I stick to what the lawyer said, hopefully the ACLU will not get involved.
Well, so again, so I believe they've been out there twice.
Oh, the police have already talked about the specific one.
I believe so, no?
No, I think they just drove by to confirm.
Oh, this is a new one, this is a new one, I'm sorry. I'm confusing it with another.
The other one was down here.
Okay, so, so, so my recommendation then would be to ask police to inform a layup. You know, again, you cannot demand it, you can ask it.
I'll follow this.
And if you'd like to follow up, do you like to follow up with the, with the chief or with the sergeant?
I can do that, yeah.
Steve. You say it's a First Amendment right, and I assume that's correct. I find it a little offensive to use a police officer whose duty is to enforce the law, be asking for something that he doesn't have a right to ask for. So I think if anybody should do it, should be a member of the select board and justice would be fine.
Well, I will say our lawyers did say we could ask.
Yeah, county officials could.
We just can't take enforcement action.
Right, alright, excuse me. And, and, and listen, this is a small town, Don. Most people know the chief, okay? I consider, I consider our, I consider their activities, I consider him to be a peace officer. I know that's a mixing of terms. If, I would, I think that most people respect the chief and that's the reason why. I'm not, and he's done it in the past and I'm perfectly, I mean, this is something, you know, I'm perfectly happy with him, with him doing it because I don't, because I don't find him to be, you know, heavy-handed and he's done it before and he's not gonna roll up with the lights on. It's just, but, but again, this has been, you know, but people, you know, listen, it seems to be bothering a whole lot of people. What you can do is ask. And Justin, maybe you wanna go with him. You can do a court, you can do a ride along. But, but I'm concerned that, that you're asking for a government official to also act in an authority that, you know, that might be beyond, you know, I mean, at least, you know.
You know, I think you're way understating the feeling that people have even if they know a police officer, with a police officer coming to see them. And if a police officer is asking you to do something, you're talking to somebody who can stop you from speeding and do other things that can adversely affect your life, I think that's really heavy-handed and I think Justin should do it by himself.
I'll do it. Frankly, I don't even know where, but I'll take a line.
Okay, so we have a member of the audience like to speak?
Heather Bello has had.
Hi Heather.
Hi, Mr. Kirby. I, my question is about these signs. What exactly is this all about? What do the signs say? I understand profanity involved, but I'm, you know, I have no idea what the signs say and you guys haven't mentioned it, so I'm just asking. Thank you.
Generally, don't wanna give it, don't wanna give, you know, if people find it offensive, you don't wanna say offensive things. So I would prefer not to, not to go into the specific language. I'm sorry, Heather, I know, because I don't, I don't wanna give anything. People find it offensive, why?
That's okay. Can you just say where the signs are and what, you know, just give me a general idea of what they're about rather than the specific language?
Only one sign.
One sign?
On Blue Hill Road.
On Blue Hill Road. One sign on Blue Hill Road.
And the, and the topic of the, you know, the general topic of the sign or the, is what? Without, you know, using the profanity here.
Let me just verify.
Doesn't say what it is, it just says it has profanity.
Okay, so I, so I don't have the specific language for you, Heather. I'm not, I'm not missing words, but I, generally when I'm driving on Blue Hill Road, I'm keeping my eye out for that little culvert that, when my tire gets wedged in all the time. So I don't, if there's anybody out there, is it, is it one of those politically bent signs? Does anybody know?
So the signs are political?
I haven't, so I haven't seen, I haven't seen it personally, so I can't, I can't verify. Do you know what we're talking about here? No, no. Okay, so neither of us have actually seen the sign. So we can't give you accurate information. Mary, hi Mary.
Hi.
Do you want to chime in or no?
Yes, I think that we have ordinances about signs and I think it's kind of a zoning or bylaw issue about what can and cannot be on signs and how big and how close they could be to the road and all that. So can it be handled that way?
The claim is really, is really about what's on it. There, we will definitely look into that as far as signage itself. But, but the main, the main complaint is really what's on it. But again, I haven't seen it. I'm gonna drive, I'll drive down Blue Hill Road and we'll take a look at it.
Actually, council still says he doesn't recommend going to sign by law because it's a risk of a First Amendment claim.
Okay, so, so right now, and right now the bulk of the complaint is of what's written on it and not the signage itself. So Heather, I'm sorry, I can't give you any more. Maybe get in the car and drive down Blue Hill Road.
Thank you, I appreciate you answering my question. And so, did you just say that town council is saying not to interfere with this because of First Amendment issues? Or is that what I just heard? I just wanna make sure I was, I heard it clearly.
It's my understanding that.
Should I just read what council wrote? Sure. I do agree with prior council's advice, which for everyone's edification, previously Jeremiah Pollard said that we shouldn't involve with this, more or less. I do agree with prior council's advice against attempting to take enforcement action against this resident. I assume this is a sign on private property. For better or worse, the First Amendment, as interpreted by the courts, protects an individual's rights of expression, even where the language they use is commonly felt to be profane or to a large extent even obscene. Town officials could ask that the individual to remove or reword the sign based on other residents' complaints, but I cannot recommend actual enforcement action. There could be an argument that under the zoning bylaws, the sign exceeds the size limit for temporary signs if it is larger than four square feet. For starters, however, the town would need to show that it has consistently enforced this provision regardless of what the signs say. I still wouldn't recommend this, however. The risk of a First Amendment claim against the town is real as there are several groups, the ACLU for example, always looking for potential plaintiffs to represent unconstitutional issues.
Again, this is not the first time that we, you know, that we've had this position and we're not the only town that's been in this position. So it's, we're walking the fine line. So Justin, do you wanna, do you wanna take, do you wanna take the first crack at it? Or do you wanna partner up with? I personally would suggest you. I personally would suggest you partner up.
I would politely find the sign and politely ask.
Okay, so Melissa, could you up the insurance on Justin?
I was gonna say, are you you're not worried about being accused of trespassing on someone's property?
Oh, from the road. I'll be very polite.
Well, listen, so I I I really don't think people should put themselves in harm's way. If you can if you can if you can find a way to do this, to 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 ask, okay, it's fine. So, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Posting meetings on YouTube prior to September twenty second.
Okay, so I believe September twenty second was the date that we agreed to the YouTube Terms of Service, and I believe that all of our meetings have been posted, including September twenty second since then. It has been brought to my attention that we never clarified in our policy if retroactively meetings would be posted and that the select board should clarify. I personally, if we are able to, would move to post meetings back to June second, when we initially agreed to post the meetings to the website. But maybe someone will say, we don't wanna post the meetings, or maybe someone will say, we should post them back as far as we have them, since we started doing virtual meetings. But my sense is that when the board agreed to post meetings to the website on June second, we should post back that time.
So so we we started, we signed it, we signed an agreement with YouTube as of the September twenty second of September. So I think we should post from twenty second of September on forward. There there are people out there that have been posting the prior meetings on 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 YouTube already. So there are a bunch of these that are already there. But I don't I don't I don't know what, I don't know, I don't, can you retroact? I don't think you can go back to YouTube and say, hey, but we can't go back and say, we can't make that, we can't enter into their Terms of Service agreement earlier than when we when we initially did it.
I was reading more into the intent of that first meeting in June, when the board's intent was to start posting our meetings online.
But my intent was never to post on YouTube, you know that. So I did agree finally on September twenty second to start. Or I don't think I I agreed. I think I I voted down. Anyway, it it was voted on finally in September twenty second. So I mean, we can only start from 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 there. But don't fear not. There's plenty of people that have that have these meetings. They've been posting them all over the place. I I myself have gotten notices from three casting directors, because they've seen me on on YouTube. The R A O position, the record, okay, record, access officer position, and reports from John Levin. Hi, John Levin.
Thank you, members of the board. And for those who don't know me, my name is John Levin. I live on Elephant Rock Road. I also am the chairman of the zoning board of appeals in town, so I am familiar with the workings of town. I was appointed last Wednesday evening as the records access officer, and I thought it would be helpful if I explained some of the aspects of the record, public records law as it applies to the town, and specifically with respect to the pending application, so that everyone has a general understanding of the process, as well as where we are with the records request. A records access officer is responsible for managing the town's response to public records requests. That's not to say that every time someone walks into the office and asks for a copy of a document, that I'm gonna get caught. Typically, when someone walks in and asks for documents, they're usually provided within a reasonable time, and that's sort of the end of it. There are circumstances where people do not get documents that they request in a timely fashion, or they don't get a complete document in a timely fashion, or for some reason, the town officer says that they can't release the document. Then in that case, it's not uncommon that a an official public records request will be submitted. So once the public records request is submitted, that's when a public, excuse me, that's when a records access officer, as I am, becomes involved. The public records statute is quite specific, and it's quite dense. It sets out exactly what I can do and what the town can do, and it also says what I can't do and what the town can't do. So it it really has a fair amount of specificity. My job is to apply the public records statute to each public records request, regardless of any personal feeling that I may have towards the request or the person making the request. I'm basically an independent determiner of the process, and I am not supposed to take a position relative to the personal position relative to the request. Each request is handled independently, and in my case, it'll be handled in a professional manner. And all decisions will be made in accordance with the statute, even if it appears to be inconsistent with the prior handling of a public records request. Every request will have its own issues and will result in its own determination. So how does the process work? Well, when an official public records request is submitted, the town and I, as the officer of the town, have ten business days to comply with the request. So that means that within ten business days, I or the town is supposed to turn over to the person making the request whatever the documents are that they're requesting. If I determine that the magnitude or difficulty of the request or the breadth of the request can't reasonably be accomplished or is unduly burdensome to the town, I can extend that original ten business days to fifteen business days. I can also petition the supervisor of records at the Secretary of State for additional time up to thirty business days. So if you have a very significant records request, there are ways in which you can extend the time to allow you to to process it. I also have the authority to petition the supervisor of records to ask that the town be relieved of the requirement to respond to the records request based on very specific grounds that are set forth in the statute. So the rights that I have as an extension of the town to do these things, however, are lost if I do not file a response to the original records request within ten business days. So once that ten business days passes, all of these options that I've just expressed in terms of extending on my own, extending through the state, asking the state to relieve the town of the responsibility of responding are gone. I I have no I have no ability to affect any of those those situations. So what is a public record? Well, a public record is basically almost any piece of paper or document that is generated by the town. That's a broad description. It can be electronic, it can be paper, it can be a recording. But there are some requirements. It must be within the custody or control of the town. It can't be somewhere else. It has to be in the custody and control of the town. It has to be made or received by an officer or an employee. So if if a non-officer or employee creates some record somewhere, that is not a town public record. There are nineteen categories of exemptions to what a public record is, and they're mostly very specific arcane things like criminal records and and employment records and so forth. These are statutory exemptions. It's not something that the records off access officer has any discretion on. If something fits within one of these categories, they are not considered a public record for purposes of disclosure. And then there are other statutory exemptions as well. There is one specific exemption that I think is worth noting, and that is that notebooks and other materials prepared by an employee, which are personal to him and not maintained by the town, are exempt and not considered public records. So I think that's a very, very important distinction, a very important exemption. The the statute does permit a records access officer to charge fees for presentation of documents, for the searching for them, for copying of them, for reproduction of electronic records, and so forth. The statute says that I can only charge a reasonable fee, and it limits what the what reasonable can be, except in circumstances where I then apply to the so-called supervisor of records to get a larger authority in terms of the fees and expenses. This is another issue, another aspect where if the if the records response is not timely responded to within those ten days, fees cannot be charged. Because the statute says that if you're going to charge a reasonable fee, you must notify the requister within the first ten business days. So that's another action that I have that goes away if the records request is not responded to within ten business days. Now, I know the the select board recently voted to waive public records fees for certain public officials. Unfortunately, that vote has nothing to do with what I'm talking about. The statute is very clear that I have that authority. The select board can't take that authority away from me. What the select board essentially did was set made an internal policy that if someone comes in and asks for records, that the that the town officer can't be charged for. But if it's a public records request, an official public records request, then that policy is not applicable. And and if you and in fact, the meeting minutes actually note that the records access officer is not bound by the decision, by that language of the of the select board meeting. So I thought I would just update everyone on the status of the pending record request, because at the at the at the select board hearing where I was appointed, there was quite a bit of discussion about it. So I thought it would be helpful just to bring everyone up to date. I'm not going to go into the substance or details of the request, nor am I gonna go into my review or analysis or any determination I made with respect to the request. I'm just gonna give a summary of the status of the individual request. So there are two original requests submitted by Melissa Mill, one which was joined by an anonymous person, directed to the clerk. And these requests were submitted on September fifteenth and September fourteenth, twenty twenty one. So due to the passage of time, because there was no official response within ten business days to those requests, there's nothing I can do in terms of charging the fee. In theory, I can't extend the time for a response. I cannot take action to the supervisor of public records to request additional time or additional fees, or to have the town relieve responding to those requests. So the town is obligated to respond to those requests. I understand that Terry has provided a partial response, and I've asked her for those documents, so that I know what's remaining. I've asked her to tell me what else is remaining to be produced. I've asked her to tell me what she believes may be exempt from production, and whether or not there would be any, in her mind, any cost to produce the records. I've also transmitted correspondence to Melissa, advising her that certain types of records contained within the two requests are not considered public records within the custody and control of the town, and therefore she should not expect them to be produced. Next, we have two requests submitted by John Weingold, both dated November first, twenty twenty one. Within the prescribed ten business days, I responded to Mr. Weingold, exercised the town's right to extend the time period by an additional fifteen days, because it met the criteria regarding magnitude, difficulty, and burden. And I've also petitioned the supervisor of records for either an additional thirty business days or a determination that the town is not required to respond. I've also advised Mr. Weingold that he will be charged a fee for the cost of the search. And and with respect to copies, that he'll be charged a fee per page in excess of a hundred pages. Mr. Weingold's request captures about ninety-two specific document requests. So I think in that circumstance, where the where the request is so significant, it is reasonable to charge a fee. I've also determined that should the supervisor of records not grant the town's petition to be relieved from responding to Mr. Weingold's request, that the town should hire a temporary employee to provide the necessary services to comply. And I'll get back to this in a minute. The last request that's been filed was filed by Nancy Telasovich, and it was submitted to Melissa Mill on November fifth, twenty twenty one, for a single document from a select board executive session on October fourth. This request has also been responded to in a timely fashion. Since this request passed, the documents generated during the executive session of the select board, I don't have the ability or the authority to produce them. And I've provided the select board with a memo outlining what needs to be done in order to comply with this request. Because the timeframe necessary for the select board to process this will clearly be beyond the ten business days, I've advised Ms. Telasovich in my response that I'm automatically extending the time by the additional fifteen days and told her that once I have clarity from the select board, that I would then follow up on my response. What the select board essentially is going to need to do is it's going to need to review the specific record request in relation to the executive session and determine whether the the select board must continue to withhold the information for any statutory confidential reason, or whether or not it can now be disclosed. That's not a that's not a decision that I can make. That's only a decision the select board can make. And I'm suggesting that the select board may need to make that decision with the assistance of the town council. Once the select board makes that determination, they then can advise me as to whether or not they're going to make the confidential record public, in which case I will produce it to Ms. Telasovich, or whether or not they will continue to hold it confidential, in which case I'll respond in that fashion. So back to my recommendation for the hiring of a temporary employee. If the supervisor of records does not relieve the town providing the records requested in Mr. Weingold's public records request, I am gonna recommend that the town hire a temporary employee to perform the necessary tasks to comply. And I make this recommendation for two reasons. First, I believe that if Melissa is responsible for the record request response, and she would be the only one at the present time who would be able to compile those records. Due to the difficult relationship between Mr. Weingold and Melissa, I believe that Mr. Weingold will never agree that he has that Melissa has properly complied with the records request, and will end up just going around the surface. And I just don't think that's a sensible use of the of the town's resources, and and I think we'll never get to the end of the of the problem. But more importantly, I think the amount of time it will take to process the records request will be an extraordinary amount of time. As I suggested or indicated, there's ninety-two specific record requests within the two public records requests of Mr. Weingold. And to fulfill the compliance requirements would not permit the town administrator to do her job. If she's spending all her time doing this public records response, which would take a significant amount of time, she's not gonna have the time to perform her regular services. And so I'm not asking the select board to do anything about it today, but I am suggesting that if the that if the supervisor of records turns down the town's request to relieve the town of responding, that I think that's something that should be taken up seriously by the Select Board. And I thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to, to speak to you tonight.
I have, I have a couple of questions for you, Terry. You, you spoke about the, the 10 days of an official response, which allows, which gives you options as to how you can treat their request. Are you talking about a, a 10-day limit with a response from the records access officer? Or a 10-day limit with a response from the person who needs to produce documents based on the request?
Well, the bottom line is that the statute requires the town to produce the documents within 10 business days. If they get produced by anybody, then the town is satisfied in applying. The records access officer, in theory, is the one who's responsible to make sure that those records get responded to within that timeframe. And if the records access officer knows that they're not going to get responded to within that timeframe, then a response has to go out within those 10 days in order to preserve those rights.
A response to the requister, or a response?
A response to the request. By the records access officer.
So what happens if the requister is the records access officer?
I think the answer probably is that there's more than one records access officer in town. So I don't know if that would, if that would, if that would conflict or confuse or, or cross out the, the, raise the issue that you raised. I don't really know the answer to the question. But I think that the bottom line is that town did not respond timely.
Well, to who did they not respond, respond in a timely fashion to?
To the requister.
But if the requister is the records access officer, what would a response even look like? An email to oneself?
In theory, the, the, the records access officer should have met with the person who had the, the documents, said, "How long is it going to take you to produce these documents?" If they weren't going to be able to be produced within the 10 business days, then yes, there should have been essentially a piece of paper from one to the other, assuming that the other records access officer shouldn't have stepped in to, to do it in a timely fashion.
But another thing that didn't happen in the process, I mean, you know the public records guy, there's about 13 things that happened between the initial request being made to the RIO and the, and the 10-day limit being set for the person who must produce documents, right? They need to determine if the scope is reasonable, they need to determine enough to be charged, they need to do all those other things. And so if those things haven't been done, is the, are the 10 days even, has the clock started ticking on those 10 days?
Well, I can only speak to the statute, Justin. The statute is very clear. It doesn't, I'm not sure it's ever, the statute wasn't intended to deal with this particular issue. I can't tell you whether or not there has been, is any case law or other rulings that have been, have come down relative to this, but based on the strict interpretation of the statute, the, the statute was not compliant with, and as a result, the records access officer no longer has these rights.
And another question, do you know if a records access officer should be sworn in to their office?
I don't know, but I have been sworn in.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Terry had it.
Oh, I, I didn't swear to one yet.
You're not the only one who couldn't swear me in. And since you didn't respond to my email when I asked you whether or not you'd be available...
Today at 4:00. You said today at 4:00, and I just hear that.
No, I didn't say today at 4:00.
You said Wednesday at 4:00, but I, but I...
No, no, I did not, I did not say Wednesday at 4:00. I sent you an email on Saturday, in response to yours, and I said, "I don't know if I need to be sworn in. I look to your guidance, please tell me." And I can either be sworn in over Zoom, or I can be sworn in before the Select Board meeting on Wednesday, if you have responded to me. You never responded to me. So I was sworn in before Notre Republic on Monday morning, which the statute allows. And I've sent you a copy of that email this afternoon at midday, so it should be available.
I want to thank you for such a clear exposition of the statute of liberty education. I have one question. Isn't there a part of the statute that would allow $25 per hour to be paid to the person who was hired, and that money coming from the requister, in this case, Mr. Weingold?
There is a provision in the statute that allows a charge of $25 an hour to the requister. It doesn't say that it's to be used to hire someone, it's essentially a reimbursement figure, a cap on the reimbursement hourly rate that one in theory, that I could charge as a, as a records access, excuse me, records access officer.
Thank you.
Hi, John. I'm going to echo what Don said. You've done a phenomenal job explaining the whole process, and I want to take it one step further. I really thank you for stepping up to be the, I have to excuse the RIO under these circumstances. And it couldn't have taken just a few minutes or just an hour to see you do all this research. And thank you, because I know how difficult these, these processes are. So, welcome, welcome to Monterey, and thank you.
I, I would like, if, whether you'd like us to consult our counsel, or whether statute or case law will tell you, I mean, I'm, I would like to understand this idea of a response to the requister when the requister is the RIO, right? Because we're saying no response was made to the requister, but at the same time, every response was made because they're the same person, right? And so they know exactly what's going on. I mean, because what you're saying is that because there was no official response within 10 days, the town can no longer seek to, seek an extension, seek to have the request withdrawn or narrowed, right? But I don't, I don't buy the idea that there was no official response within 10 days.
So communications were sent to Terry asking her the status of it, and there was no response.
But my idea, my understanding from John was that we're talking about the response from the RIO to the requister within 10 days?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's not anything to do with the people producing the documents?
That's true.
Okay. So that's the communication that we're concerned with, and does that communication, I mean, how can we say that communication did or didn't happen when the requister is the RIO? And I, I think that's something worth looking into, and maybe we can ask our counsel.
I, I can tell, I can tell you that there's nothing in the town records that reflects a response that would meet the statute, okay? I mean, yes, there was, there were communications back and forth, but it does not meet the statute. I will also say that in this, I am acting as the records access officer. I am not going to act as the town attorney. Believe me, I've already spent a huge amount of time dealing with these issues. And if, if the Select Board wants to engage town council to review this question, that's fine with me, and I, and to be, I will certainly abide by whatever town council says should be the correct interpretation of it. I only know what's in front of me. And what's in front of me is that the, is that the statute was not compliant with, and therefore those, those rights, in my mind, have been lost.
And the records access officer did not comply with the statute by not sending a response to the requister? Is that the statute that we're talking about that wasn't followed?
Correct.
Okay. It just seems to me to create a potential for abuse where the records access officer can make a request and then themselves not respond to it within 10 days, therefore nullifying any action that could be taken to narrow the scope, or any of the other action that you listed.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with your concern, Justin. I don't know the answer, but I also will tell you that I think that the fact that there is a, there is a second records access officer of, of the town is a problem relative to that issue.
Okay, Don, let's go down it and then, and then...
Okay, so I think you're making a good point, Justin. And I would urge the board to ask counsel, I'm sure you've been listening carefully to what John has said, and what he said is, he's not speaking as lawyer, he's speaking as RIO. He has to look at the statute, statute on its face is clear, the thing wasn't done. And that's the, the end of what he can do as an RIO. It's right to ask counsel for his opinion, for her opinion, as to whether in the particular unusual circumstances here, the 10 days should not apply. And I would urge the board to do that.
Terry. When I got the first request, I was under the impression that Melissa had said, "As long as I say I'm working on it," that was a valid statement, because I had nine months of emails for 12 people. So I got her, I sent a request into the public records in Boston, and got an extension of 25 days, and they, they granted it to me. And I did give Melissa everything I had.
So, so you're, so 100%, so here, I guess here's the thing. So, so you were acting as a public records access officer, Melissa was a public records officer?
No, no, no.
Access officer, the same person?
Right, the only person that can request the extension would be me, so she couldn't request the extension.
No, that's not true. That's right. No, the, the, the recipient of the...
But, but the, but the conundrum is that the recipient also is, was, was a public records access officer.
But there's also another person involved, and they were, they were made aware that she couldn't meet the deadline. We filed a complaint with the, with the supervisor of records, and they told me that the whole situation was handled incorrectly.
Well, I, I, I don't, I think that we're mixing apples and oranges here. First of all, the fact that, that the, the fact that these timelines have passed doesn't mean that the town is not required to respond. It just means that the town has lost these various rights in theory for extension, okay? It's unclear as to what the, what the remedy of the town in theory could be subject to penalty as a result of not responding to the public records request. Now, I'm hearing something, and I can tell you that I have not heard before in terms of the process and so forth. I'm certainly more than happy to present, based on information that Terry gives me, a response to the public records request. Whether or not it's deemed timely or not, it won't be up to me. And, and how it's received by the requister, again, is not up to me. But, you know, we can certainly, as far as I'm concerned, I can respond 10 years after the date. It's just a question of whether or not in those 10 years, someone's going to do something that's going to create a problem for the town.
I do think, yeah, I do think there's a lot of variables going on with extensions and the communications between the requister and the RIO, and the communications between the RIO and the people that need to produce documents. So maybe, and maybe Terry could share with you the extension that she received from the state office, and that might help prepare a response to the requisters. I don't know. Because, and, I mean, and there's also the added complexity that there, within 10 days, the RIO needs to respond to the requister, and if it's the same person, I mean, you don't have to fault the question.
Can you, do you look into it?
Well, certainly, I was, you know, I, I did ask for the information from Terry. I'm hearing tonight for the first time some information, so I will follow up with that when, when it's like that.
So you'll follow up with it? Okay. So let's, let's, um, Jim, I'm just going to do a lot. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. Actually, I learned a whole lot of new things that I didn't know, so I thank you. The board received...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Aren't you going to have a motion to pose the question to counsel?
No, we're going to let, first, we're going to let John, first, we're going to let John look into it.
I think at first it seemed a lot, I mean, it's not simple between extensions and the requister being the RIO. I mean, what question we ask counsel?
Correct.
Maybe we could get some guidance on what to ask counsel. I mean, because I don't even know at this point.
We'll get that guidance, let, let John look into it, and if there's, if he's got a question that he cannot answer, we will, we will, we will consult with counsel. But that's, I think that's the appropriate process.
Yeah, I think it's in the best interest of all of our employees and public officials not having to respond to what's requested. And thank you, John, for looking out for them.
They could have, it's in the minutes. Okay, so we were sent, we received two, two, two letters here from the public, and I'd ask you to read them. They're brief. One is from Christopher Blair, dated November 4th, 2021, and it, and it's, it's to the entire board. In regard to Dennis Lynch, Select Board Agenda Item of 27, October 2021. Dear Select Board, I was in attendance at Town Hall for Select Board meeting on the 27, the 27, on 27, October 2021, where new business, where new business agenda item number five stated its purpose to quote removal of Dennis Lynch as grant writer and quote. There was no one in attendance who had put the item on the agenda. There was no one in attendance who knew the purpose of the item. By default, the administration of Town Hall and the Select Board allowed the item, as well as a similar item, number six, to be into published agenda for the Select Board business. It was published for the public consumption and placed on the Town of Monterey website. During the meeting, the two Select Board members present, having a quorum, made a motion and vote to remove the items from the agenda and from discussion during the meeting. I worked with Dennis Lynch on the Conservation Commission. I believe Dennis to be a reliable, diligent, and hardworking person. According to simple math, he has produced multiples of his costs to the, to the town in income and to the town from grants written and received. In the current era, towns must rely more on grant income than decades ago, as their unfunded mandates generate cost centers in town where none existed before. Please recognize that this individual's reputation and goodwill has, will have been soiled by intended and unintended actions from citizens of our town, done, from citizens of our town. The negative information propagates into the interweb connected world we live in. Concerned about this disfigurement of his good name, I request the Select Board to place on the agenda to be published an item that would make clear that the current status of Dennis Lynch in Town Hall operate, that would make clear the current status of Dennis Lynch in Town Hall operations, our willingness to continue our, our relation with his grant writing efforts, and acknowledge the benefit accrued to the town from Dennis's work. Thank you, Christopher Blair, Monterey, Massachusetts. Any, any comments? The next one is, is Steve Moore, sent a letter Friday, November 12th, 2021, addressed to the entire board. Mr. Steven Wise, Mr. John Weingold, Mr. Justin Maycock. At the town meeting this June, I voted in favor of the proposed bylaw review committee. When the Select Board put out solicitation for members to staff the committee, I quickly sent in a letter of interest. In addition, I wrote to 10 or so other people in town who would be thoughtful members, encouraging them to show interest. It was mentioned at last night's Select Board meeting that the board had already received more letters of interest... that the board had already received more letters of interest than necessary. This Select Board meeting, this Select Board meeting this Wednesday, November 10th, began with Select Board Member John Weingold raising a point of order, saying that the agenda for the meeting did not list the meeting location, which is required by the open meeting law, and suggesting thus the meeting was not legal. After some contentious discussion and his moving twice to remove Stephen Weiss as Chair because of this error, Mr. Weingold decided to abstain from voting and soon left the meeting without explanation. A team player interested in the real business of the town would have pointed out the error, then, then suggesting that henceforth the agenda should specify meeting location. Historically, Town Hall suspended only during the height of the pandemic. And then the meeting can continue with all three board members. A spot check of agendas back to July 2020 shows that meeting locations have not been listed on the agendas during that period, an error, perhaps, but one borne by the entire board. Mr. Weingold's sole interest seems to be strict adherence to the laws and not the business that needs to be conducted. His history to date tells me we shouldn't be surprised if he doesn't file an open meeting, an OML complaint, and move to have all decisions made in the past, however long time period, be voided because of this technical deficit on the agendas. Members of all town boards seem to be under intense scrutiny of OML violations with complaints being filed for procedural errors despite these volunteers trying to do their best to help manage the town. Open meeting laws have a definite purpose for the conducting of town business, but should not be used to harass folks. In addition to the vigilance over OML procedural matters, we now learn that there have been several sweeping document requests in the past few months for a broad range of communications involving numerous townspeople in both official and individual roles and sometimes vaguely stated categories. The apparent intention for the provision of doc, for the provision for documented requests is to help individuals, regardless of their roles, to stay informed about public business. Think, think of it as fishing with a rod and a lure. The recent mass requests are fishing with a trawler net to see who gets pulled onto the deck. It is a chilling use of the right to request this information. It should be a warning to any citizens interested in serving in a public, in public capacity or even being involved. Some recent requests clearly point to objections to large turnouts at some, at some recent Select Board meetings. How did people know? Were town officials involved in this political organizing? Who wrote what to whom and what exact, and about what exact, et cetera? Given the thirst for discovering errors and filing complaints, and given this perverse use of documented rights to conduct a dragnet, partly for the purpose of investigating townspeople exercising their rights of free association, I've decided that I don't want to be dragged into this dysfunction. I'm withdrawing my letter of interest for joining the bylaw review committee. I hope that this committee can be formed with people with open minds and a willingness to work with each other and can operate free of interference of the sort mentioned above. Signs, Steve Moore. Those are the two letters. We're gonna, we're gonna make them available, could be available to the public. And add it into the minutes. Questions and comments from the public?
Kind of senior, and his address is.
And I told him to be quiet. I've never got a chance to do that.
It is a pleasure to see the Select Board functioning so well. Thank you.
Thank you. Here. Yes, sir.
I understand from reading the Berkshire Eagle that Terry Walker has lodged a complaint against me, the Select Board. I can't control Terry Walker sending complaints to anybody. That's her problem. But if this board has received a complaint about me, I am demanding that it get forwarded to the police. You have absolutely no jurisdiction over me as a citizen and a resident of this town. You may not hold any complaints because it is not in your purview. If you don't want to give me a copy, I'll get a copy. But I demand that you send it to the police. This is an outrage. And I'm, I'm, I'm demanding an answer from you now.
In all honesty, I, I don't have a, I don't believe I have a copy of a complaint that had your name on it. I've got a copy of lots of complaints. Some of them I've read, some of them I just, I have. Quite frankly, I stopped reading them. Is, if there's, if there's a, I believe that people have the right, if there's a complaint against them that mentions them, that we should have a copy. I don't know. I would leave it up to the Records Access Officer and Town Council. I don't know.
This has nothing to do with the records of this town. This has nothing to do with the records of this town. If you get a complaint and it's against not an employee or someone who works in this town or tangentially who works in this town, but is just a resident, you must pass it on to the police. This is not in your purview. This is not in your domain. This is not going to sit.
Hello, I will, if it's okay with, with the board here, I will contact Town Council. I will, I will, I will tell them of your request. I, I have not, I, I can tell you, I haven't, if somebody can call me in to, perhaps to complain it, but if you call me into where it exists, I, I mean, I don't, I don't have access to it. Or if I have it, I, I don't know where it is. So I will, I will contact.
You can feel free to, to, to contact your Town Council all you want. I've already contacted my council, and I'm gonna proceed. I'm gonna proceed against this board because I am furious about this. This is dereliction of duty, and this is not your domain. And I'm gonna demand that it be released immediately.
You want it released to the police or you?
You can do either one. Because if it gets released to the police, he has to notify.
I'm sorry, Mickey?
This, this is just a question because I don't understand. So if I went into somebody's office, Melissa's office, and I was harassing her.
Everybody's kicking on Melissa.
Well, well, yeah, she, you can take it.
I can take it.
She's tough, kidding. And if I went in there and I was harassing her, could she make a complaint against me, I guess? I don't know. It seems to be.
To the police. To the police.
To the police, but not to the Select Board.
Nothing to do with the Select Board.
Oh.
Now, if there are two employees that are.
Then, then, then it'll go, then it says, okay.
That's their purview, not a resident who is not.
Yeah, I, I didn't know that bit. I was worried about that.
Okay? Anybody from the audience, anybody?
Yeah, I've sat through the last four meetings in person and other meetings online, and I find very disturbing that we have three select people and only two participate in any of our town business. And I think it's really appalling that this one select person doesn't want to participate in getting anything done into this town. And I think it, it should be something maybe that should be put in a bylaw that if a select person or anybody on a committee does not attend a certain amount of meetings over the year, then we should have the right to remove them from that committee or that position.
That's what my board is saying.
So, thank you, Jerry. It's my understanding, and I'm not an attorney, but it's my understanding that the current recall bylaw would cover the circumstances that just happened, but it has to go through a certain process.
I just, I could put it in the minutes.
Okay. No, it's, it's, it's in the, it's in the minutes. This is not an easy job. And none of us love going through the.
And I understand that the two of you don't have to carry the burden of a three-person Select Board.
That's what I was, I was, that's what I was elected for. So I can only, I can only do what I, what I was personally elected for. So I think the same thing, Mr. Meek. Okay. Thank you, Phil.
To do that, it would have to be done by a special act. You could have a special act that said that if an elected person doesn't attend a certain number of meetings, he can be removed by the other members. But because it affects elections, it would have to be enacted by the legislature.
So let's, let's have one special act at a time, Joey. But anyway, I'm gonna continue doing what I'm doing. He can continue what he's doing. We can do what he's doing. We're only gonna try to do what we, what we, we were elected to do. I make a motion to adjourn.
What's that? When John was talking about the policy that we created on September 1st about not paying for records requests, he mentioned the minutes that he read on the September 1st meeting, the one-year policy. I thought it would be good if he could also see the video to, to see the whole discussion.
But if he said that anything that we, that we impose, which does not meet, does not align with the statute, whether he sees the.
No, I understand. I just think in general, it'd be good if someone had a question about the minutes, and we have the video, that they would be able, so I would motion to post the videos to YouTube back to September 1st.
Since we signed the, the YouTube agreement on September 22nd, so I, I can't go back. As Cher said, we can turn back time, but we can't. It's the only time that anybody quoted Cher at a Select Board meeting. Probably not gonna help me at all on YouTube. So I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of I?
Yes.
Bye.